To order, and Ricka, if you would do roll call, please. Mayor Breeden.
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Hayman?
Here.
Mr. Mauer?
Here.
We have five present, we have a quorum. I'm going to insert something in here before the approval of the agenda. I would like to say thank you to our Ridgecrest Police Department, all the officers, all the people who helped them, all the volunteers. After the murder, yes, two, whatever, Monday? Monday, in 11 hours, we had the case solved. We caught the perpetrator. We were not able, obviously, to save the victim, but I want to say thank you. Jed, would you please extend that to all your officers, all your team? You guys did an outstanding job, and I want to say, thank you. Okay. All right, now that I've already done something out of the agenda, we're going to have approval of the agenda. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
I'm going to need to do a roll call vote. Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Hayman?
Aye.
Mr. Mauer?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries. Okay, public comment. Persons wishing to address the council matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on items that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Is there anyone who would like to address the council under public comment? I see none. So we will begin with presentations. Mr. Strahan.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I'm here tonight at the request of council to give an update on the Ridgecrest Hospital Emergency Department upgrade. As you well know, the last two weeks, we've had articles in the paper that were extremely derogatory towards the city and painted a picture that I feel was untrue. To start off with is the city is supportive of the hospital's emergency department upgrade in heliport. This is not a city versus healthcare issue, nor is it a healthcare versus development issue. The city truly wants to work with the hospital. However, the hospital during the process has not been forthcoming with very important information concerning their flight path. The hospital failed to notify the city of their true proposed flight path and its impacts on surrounding properties, and they failed to follow the Department of Aeronautics' process to secure permit for the proposed new heliport. This is also a property rights issue, affecting property and development rights without proper notice. The city is also extremely concerned with the hospital positioning itself to blame the city if their emergency department upgrade project fails. Specifically, the headline in the article read, "Hospital Upgrade in Jeopardy: RH Considers Pulling Plug on New Emergency Department Following Changing City Directives, Delays, and Surprise Costs." City claims, a hospital claims city is prioritizing hotel development over the emergency department upgrade. City employee Gary Parsons was misinformed, the hospital, early in the process that there was a 30-foot height limit 80-foot from the curb edge along North Charlie Boulevard. Those are some of the main themes of that article, which I believe my presentation's going to refute. Little background on the, on the project. From looking at emails, it appeared that the hospital began to meet with the city in March of 2017 to discuss the entitlement process on the emergency department expansion and the heliport. Early on, the hospital's consultant, heliport consultants, was involved. The hospital's site plan application dated July 3, 2017, didn't mention any properties to the east of the proposed heliport as being impacted by the future development of the project. And also during the planning commission meeting for the approval of the emergency department and the helipad, there was never any mention of FAA or DOA permit or the potential impact on the surrounding properties. Yes?
Madam Mayor, I think maybe one of the roles that I'll have tonight is just to supplement with a little, I'll call it land use 101, about how things normally happen in a development project. So Ron was just talking about the application. A project's application is really the most important part because it's where the developer defines what they need. And it's, it's going to define the limits of the approval. So when a developer needs something, if the developer's quiet about it, then the developer shouldn't be surprised if the approval didn't include it. And I think one of the things that the newspaper article referred to was something about, oh, but we had a conversation, or something like that, and so-and-so promised something. I mean, if it wasn't, if the rule wasn't that the application had to be clear and in writing, and that the approval had, has to be clear and in writing, if that wasn't the rule, just think how messed up things would be. Everyone would claim that someone promised something, or this and that. So just wanted to emphasize that the application is very important and that it be complete and thorough, and describe what's being asked for. And that way, when the city considers it, they can, they have all the facts in front of them, and the environmental, environmental review considers everything. Thank you.
And you're saying that's the way with all?
With every project. That's right.
Are you taking questions afterwards, or you asking everybody to wait till you're done?
If council has questions, I will entertain questions from council.
Thank you.
And in reviewing the emails associated with this development, I did locate one email on November 15th where the hospital had requested a couple of streetlights be removed. In the email, there was a diagram that, that indicated that there were two streetlights that the city had requested the hospital to put in that need to be removed because of their flight path. Now, these were streetlights that were asked to be put in. And the most important thing is when you look at the map, you can see the, the relief drawings going out from the heliport. Those are very similar to a map I'm going to show you here in a little bit that has to do with their proposed flight path. But one thing of note, you'll notice that those relief lines end at the roadway. No indication that they continued through the roadway to the east on the undeveloped property. Here is a copy, or a photo, of the emergency, emergency department heliport site plan. You notice that in white is the new facility, and you notice that that's just contained right there on the hospital's property. Now, in reviewing the planning commission meeting from November 28th, I'm going to play a short excerpt here from you from the meeting, primarily concerning the mention regarding them having a heliport consultant on staff early on, and then they actually describe the actual flight path itself.
Next to China Lake Boulevard. Tell the commission what you've done to mitigate dust, debris, something that blows on to China Lake Boulevard. You know, for the flow of traffic.
That's a very good question. In fact, we do have a heliport consultant specialized and provided us with a lot of informations which we incorporated into this project by, if you look at the previous plans, we actually, the heliport by itself, it is six feet above the adjacent grade, and then we have solid ground, not ground, gravels, large rocks all the way around it, and also a fence, and also we have the berm to protect any debris from flying off. As you can see around it, the heliport, there's large bio retention too around the heliport. Parking is, is pretty far away from, if you go back to the color plans, you can see, or this one, the bottom part.
Okay, so you said you had a fence on it. Is it a privacy fence, or is it just a chain link fence?
It is a low fence, but also we have landscaping, low landscaping, to protect any debris from flying, or from the helipad, you know, the helicopter landing or taking off, because we do have cars around the heliport. But it's far enough, and also we have protection enough that we have landscaping and hardscape to protect it from any debris from flying off.
Okay.
So it's all, all the measures have been taken into considerations and incorporated into the plans?
Well, and that's good, except we don't know that. So that's why I'm asking.
Not a problem. And they are shown on the plans.
All right. Staff or commissioner comments, questions?
I didn't catch your name.
My name is Ben Tu with HMC Architects.
What, can you explain to me as best you can, what's the, is there a new flight path for the new location? Can you explain that a little bit, the flight path of the?
Yes, sir. The flight path, it is from China Lake Boulevard, going to, I call it west, because if you take a look at the plan, north is actually on the right side, west is at the bottom. That's the orientation that we set it. So from west going to the helipad, and the flight path is obviously from high to low, we have all the radius identified from the width, all the way across that lot going into the pad, and the pad is raised six foot, and we have to make sure everything is clear within that flight path. No obstructions, obviously, light poles, trees, all those are considered within the flight path.
So the, so the new flight path will no longer have the aircraft coming over any part of the heritage village? Will it, will it? The neighborhood to the west, will, will it have?
The neighborhood, you call it east, right on the side of the top?
Here's your old helipad.
Right.
All this area back here, you have the retirement home or the health center, and then you have private homes that are all back here. So he's saying, if this is here, is the flight path approach coming down China Lake onto the pad, is any of it going to go over this housing?
No.
Okay?
There will not be any. But like I said, the flight is from China Lake too.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Sir, is this project going to be on a single path?
Great respect for the planning commission. They had nothing in front of them that described a flight path, yet they asked questions about it, and they contemplated a flight path. So kudos to them. And the consultant said, no problem, we got it covered. So that's what I hear in that.
As of November 28, 2017, the hospital nor their consultant had ever provided the city a copy of their proposed or conceptual flight path map, which is required as part of their Department of Aeronautic application. So at this point in time, the city had no idea that there was a need, that the properties in the area would be affected any which way by the flight path in the future. Nine months later, the city's bringing forward the Holiday Inn Express site plan for approval in front of the, the planning commission. This development was well within our entitlements. There were no exceptions made to any of our ordinances. It is a four-story building, just shy of 60 feet high. Prior to this going to the planning commission, city staff reached out to the Navy and the Fire Department to make sure that, that there'd be no issues with this development. We reached out to the Fire Department, we explained to them what the conditions were, showed them a copy of the site plan, and they got back to the city with certain conditions that they wanted put into the site plan conditions, which they were.
So that's one year later, after the approval of the hospital extension, this project comes before the planning commission, the hotel across the street.
What I'm going to show you next is a video excerpt from the planning commission meeting November 28, 2017. Correction, November 28, 2017, where it was, where we first learned that there was a conflict with the hospital's proposed flight path with development to the east.
Jim Seuber, CEO of Ridgecrest Hospital, 1081 North Charlie Boulevard. And not commenting again on the, the project, I would love to see that land developed. Actually, we do have concerns about our heliport. As you know, we are moving the heliport to make it easier on our neighbors behind us as part of our new ER project. We didn't have a lot of lead time on this, but we did run it by our consultant who called the FAA, and a four-star, or a four-story hotel with the equipment on the top is going to interfere with our flight path, and we will be boxed in and not be able to have any flight paths if we honor our commitment to the neighbors in the back. So we at least need to have more discussion with the architect of this, but I'm very, very concerned this is going to interfere with our ability to provide patient care and transport, particularly with the new helipad or even the existing helipad.
When you brought your, your addition and change to the planning commission, and we looked at it, did we not talk about that the flight path was right down China Lake Boulevard?
Yes.
Okay. And this, this particular project is set back, if I remember, what, 30 feet? Where's the architect? So, so what I'm asking is, is basically, and it's an opinion, you have a rotor blade of 14 to 16 feet, which China Lake Boulevard is more than triple that or double that, and they're on a setback of more than 100 feet. I'm not sure how that interferes with your flight path.
You know, and I can't speak for the FAA. I think a discussion needs to occur, and if it can be worked out, that's totally fine. I just don't want to appear to have any expertise in helicopters and the engineering part of it, although there are several smart people in the room that know far more than I do on this, but I, I need to bring it up because I don't want to get in a position where patient care is impacted, but we really do need to discuss.
We don't want to interfere with patient care.
Yeah. We do need a discussion with the FAA, and if we can work it out, you'll have our full support on this, but we didn't have a lot of lead time on this, and I apologize for doing it this way, but I have to look after the interest of our patients and our values, so.
Thank you. So the architect and the developer, if we approve this with a condition of the approval of the FAA, would that be acceptable to you?
A condition was placed on the site plan approval for the developer to reach out to the FAA to see if the proposed flight path conflicted with the hotel development. However, at that, that point in time, and there hasn't been a, an actual application to the Department of Aeronautics. After that meeting, we began to research the issue of the, the flight path or the helo protection zone. In looking at our research, we noticed that the lots across the street are zoned commercial service, and they're also very accessible online. The building height requirements of that area is 60-foot, and the front setback is five-foot. We had staff reach out to Department of Aeronautics, and they directed us to the application and the FAA heliport design advisory circular that the hospital would have to use in, in applying for its permit and the development of its heliport. What you see here is just an aerial view of the hospital. The lot to the south of the hospital is the proposed flight path or flight helipad. Across the street, the front three lots, the ones that are north of the Auto Zone, are the, are the ones that are affected by the heliport protection zone. The lot just north of Auto Zone is the lot where the Holiday Inn Express is planned to be built. And in looking at the FAA heliport design advisory circular, we ran across, chapter four had to do with heliports, hospital heliports. And the important thing about section 410, it's underlying, the heliport protection zone is under the, is an area under the eight-by-one approach departure surface starting at the final approach and takeoff area perimeter and extending out for a distance of 280 feet. So from this, we got a pretty good idea, starting from the middle of the proposed helipad, we got a pretty good idea how far out the, the heliport protection zone, the flight path would be at that point in time. It was fairly clear based upon what our zoning heights were, that there would, was obviously a conflict with the properties across the street. Further review of the heliport design manual, we ran across section 419, which basically states, where state and local statutes permit, the FAA encourages the hospital heliport operator to promote the adoption of the following zoning measures to ensure the heliport will continue to be available and to protect investment in the facility. Subsection B is more or less a, an overlay zone, and section C would be a navigation easement. And those would be methodologies that the hospital could have employed to protect their, their flight zone, their proposed.
So this research that, that Ron and city staff did, this is them going above and beyond, because this is the research that the hospital's consultant should have been doing, and to research what the hospital needed. One of the things that Ron mentioned was a zoning restriction, a particular type is called an overlay zone. So a zoning restriction, like any zoning restriction, can set a height limit. An overlay zone would be something where the underlying zone would remain, but there would be some additional restrictions, such as an extra height restriction due to a flight path, something like that. So overlay zone just means it's another layer of zoning added on to the rules that already exist. But these are, are things that one would think that the developer would take into account and consider. The only other thing I wanted to mention is that all of this is possible. The, the city has never taken the position that it was refusing to approve something. If the hospital or any developer submits an application asking that the city consider a different or new type of zoning restriction, rezoning a property, for example, from commercial to residential, or residential to commercial, these are all possibilities, but someone has to request it, and then it has to go through the procedures of being analyzed by staff, and then coming before the planning commission, and then coming before the city council. Something as detailed or serious as a flight path airspace height, building height restriction, something that serious, isn't just done on the fly. It's not done by showing up to a planning commission on the night that the hotel's going to get approved and saying, oh, my gosh, you've got to put a height restriction on this. That's not how it works. It's got to be applied for, notice has to go out so that the property, all property owners that are affected have an opportunity to show up to the meeting and oppose or support it.
End of September, the hospital called and requested to file an appeal regarding the hotel site plan. I advised the hospital that we would not approve the appeal because it was past the 10-day statute limitations. They said that they needed to because their attorney wanted it on record, so I told them to put it in writing, and the city would, would deny it. On October 2, 2018, we received a letter requesting an appeal. On October 8, the city attorney sent the hospital letter denying the request for appeal. A couple of primary reasons, one, it was a late appeal, and two, the flight path was never included in the site plan in the first place. It did not exist. There was some time, from what I understand, the hospital was reaching out and working with the Holiday Inn Express property owner to work out a navigation easement to be able to address the, the flight path issue. In February 26, the city and the hospital agreed to meet to discuss the, the heliport flight path. The understanding of the meeting was for the city to support the hospital for an overlay zone to protect the path, which the, the city agreed with, and we still do. During the meeting, it was mentioned why the hospital had not sought out an overlay zone or some other protective easement, and they stated they, they had relied upon a city staff member during a meeting with their consultant, and apparently, the city staff, Gary Parsons, had stated that there was a height restriction in that area already pre-existing, 30 feet high, 80 feet from the curb.
Allegedly.
I have spoken with Mr. Parsons, he said that conversation never occurred. But we left the meeting agreeing to continue to meet in the future to work on the overlay zone. March 19, I received an email from the hospital requesting an additional restriction of building heights on North Charlie Boulevard from Drummond to Inukurn, and this was a similar request, or similar methodology. They wanted 80-foot from the curb edge, 30-foot in height for the flight path. They stated this was their, their aviation, their aeronautical engineer had stated they needed for the flight path. Prior to this request, the city was led to believe that there's only small sections of property across the street that I mentioned earlier that were affected by their, their new, new heliport. And of course, the formula that was in the flight path manual, the heliport manual, didn't match what they were, they were asking. City staff met with the hospital on April 2, 2019. We discussed the, the flight path, the one-mile building restrictions, and we believed that they needed an overlay zone. Now, if you look to the left, you will see what that, what that restriction, what they were asking for, what that looks like. At the bottom, that's Drummond, at the very top is Inukurn. The width of that represents 80 feet wide on both sides of the roadway at the curb edge, and the height is 30 feet high. And that's what the hospital was asking for, under, under restriction for their supposed flight path. During the meeting, we were talking about the, the city supporting the overlay zone. We had mentioned, you know, to them that they would probably need, they would have to be a public hearing, it'd have to be publicly noticed. The city would support it, but they'd have to come, and they'd have to figure out a way of what the mitigation would be. And I, and I basically said, what, being devil's advocate, what else could you do to not have to interfere with people's development rights? And what I was told was, is that the hospital could do a elevated heliport, however the cost would be about three-quarters of a million dollar, would set the project back two years. So they also asked what the city's position was on the hotel's conditions regarding the FAA and DOA clearance, and I told them that, that the city's position was that that was met. So the meeting ended, and I told them we put something writing in there dictating the outcome of what our position was on the, the flight path.
So I just wanted to add that it's possible. This could be done. The, the city has the, the power to impose building height restrictions, but it has to be done with an application, with public hearings, planning commission, city council, there's a process to follow.
One of the suggestions that the hospital's law firm recommended was that the city change the zoning ordinances for those properties in that, that area, and then footnote what the restrictions were for the roadway between Drummond and Inukurn on Charlie Boulevard. My issue with that was, is that that would not require the 300-foot noticing for all the property owners, which would have a significant impact on their development rights. I sent Department of Aeronautics a email on April 9, received a response on, correction, sent an email April 8, received a response on April sent an email April 8th, received a response on April 9th, to discuss with them regarding the, the hospital's proposed flight path. The individual from the Department of Aeronautics indicated that they'd been in communication with the hospital on and off for the last year and a half regarding their heliport flight path. When I asked him about the hospital's request to restrict a mile's worth of our, of our commercial area for their flight path, he did not understand why that was being requested, since it was pretty clear in the heliport design manual, that it was only that section 280 feet out from the helopad itself. He also said that he had an email from the hospital's consultant concerning the hotel, and also their conceptual flight path. I had him send me both of those, and as you can see here, this is part of it on the right. And you can see that the flight path of the hospital actually clears the hotel by three foot.
Is that worst-case scenario, three feet?
Yes, that's worst-case scenario.
I think that the, the, the regulations, I presume, they take into account, like, giving a safety area, so that it doesn't mean a, a landing gear or a blade of a helicopter is going to come that close.
This is what is needed for the flight path to be approved by Department of Aeronautics. Up until this point...
Ron, were there any conditions placed on the hotel to, by the, asked for, to consider the three-foot overfly?
My understanding is that the condition that the planning commission put on the Holiday Inn project, the night that the hospital showed up at the planning commission meeting and asked for this consideration of this possible flight path, they added a condition, 90, I believe, that said, reach out to the FAA and make sure that everything's fine. So, part of that, my understanding is that that developer, the Holiday Inn developer, did send a letter to both the FAA and the State Division of Aeronautics, it's a division of Caltrans, and no response, right? Which ma- makes sense, because I'm sure those agencies were not expecting a, to have this job that they would have to approve something. So that's why Ron reached out to the Division of Aeronautics to find out for himself, is there any problem with this hotel? And when he found out that there was no issue at all, then the city cleared that condition.
To, to date, the Department of Aeronautics has not received an application from the hospital concerning their proposed flight path. What you see here is something that was created by the hospital's consultant. The city had not seen this up until April 9th. Prior to that, the hospital had never revealed the fact that this document, more than likely had, well, this one had existed since December 19th, 2018. The map I'm going to show you here in a minute, we believe, was in existence since 2016, and the hospital had it and was aware of it the entire time we were going through our entitlement process.
So that's a year before the hospital...
Right.
So that plan is a year before the hospital expansion approval?
Here's the email that, that came from Ricardo Bennett to the Department of Aeronautics, dated December 19th, 2018. And the important part of this is, is that it states in here, "We determine the hospital's proposed sector flight path for the new helopad would clear the roof of the Holiday Inn hotel structure by approximately three feet, thus meeting FAR Part 77 criteria." Basically, the hospital knew on December 19th, or should have known on December 19th, that there were no issues with the development of the hotel as it was designed.
Who, who's Ricardo Bennett?
Ricardo Bennett works for Heliport Consultants, which is a consultant of the hospital. As you heard earlier during that video clip regarding the, the site plan approval of the hospital, the, where he had mentioned that they had a heliport consultant on staff from the very beginning. We have emails that date back as far as March of 2017, from Ricardo Bennett to city staff. Here is the map, or the relief map, that we received from the Department of Aeronautics that had been forwarded to them by the hospital's consultant. Now prior to April 9th, no one at the city saw this map. This was never provided to city staff, this was never presented during the planning commission, we had no idea this existed. You can see where they, where they have, an important part, it's really kind of hard to see, it's an eight to one flight approach ratio. Each one of these reliefs is 80 foot in distance, and increases in height by 10 foot. And you can see that, that, that's probably hard to see, but you can, you can see where it goes out, where it reaches all the way out, past east towards the base. So this is the, the hospital's proposed flight path. And it clearly shows that there's at least three parcels that would be affected by the hospital's proposed flight path. None of those conflicts were brought to the city's attention at any time during the entitlement process, the site plan approval, and were only mentioned, in theory, during the planning commission meeting regarding the Holiday Inn Express site plan approval process.
What was the date on this map?
From also looking at the map, it looks like it was generated in November of 2016, which meant there was a high probability the hospital knew that this existed prior to the meeting in November of 17. You remember earlier, when I showed you that email from November 15th, 2017? See those similar relief marks? They're similar to what you see in the map that we received from Department of Aeronautics. However, on this map, it ends at the roadway, it doesn't continue across the street. And this is what was provided to the city in an email, for the city to remove two streetlights that the city was requesting the hospital put in as part of their, in part of the development The map also shows a potential development of vacant lots, which would still conflict with the flight path, even if what Mr. Parsons allegedly told the hospital was true. The hospital stated that Mr. Parsons had purported that there was a pre-existing height limitation on that roadway, 30 foot high, 80 foot in from the curb edge. As you can see, that yellow line that has been placed on the map, that represents 80 foot wide from the curb edge. However, looking at the hospital's relief map, even if that were true, there would still be an issue with height regarding, height restrictions in that area regarding future development.
Did you, did you add that yellow?
Yes, we added that yellow, we had our city engineer add it.
Can you explain that, how it affects the development, you're saying, because of the height? The development cannot take place?
The, the hospital stated that the reason why they had not come forward with this potential conflict on the east side of the roadway, was they were relying upon verbal communication, or verbal statement from staff regarding pre-existing height limitation in that area. As I stated earlier, the height limit in that area, the building height limit is 60 foot with a five-foot front setback. They were stating that, that Mr. Parsons had purported that it was a 30-foot height restriction with an 80-foot setback. However, if you plotted on that, and you follow their relief map, that even after east of that 80 foot, there's still a problem with the height restriction, because there's still, there's still, just to, just to the right of that yellow line, it, the maximum height in that area would be 40 foot. So 60-foot building would still conflict. Remind you, this isn't...
Thirty, thirty.
Yeah, 30 foot. Remind you, this isn't the city's map, this is the hospital's map. Something we hadn't seen until April 9th.
So everybody understands, because originally, all along, tonight's the first night I heard anything about 80 feet. I've only heard the 30 foot, and, and so let me make sure I get this straight. The Holiday Inn is 60 feet, is that correct?
Uh, I think it's 59.8 feet.
Okay, 59.8. And, and the, and the FAA says that the mag, what is the maximum height can be that the FAA says?
Well, it's not the FAA, it's the formula that they have to use based upon the placement of their helopad.
I, I think I can answer vice-mayor Martin. So 60 feet is the, the default building height restriction in all of the city, right? That's based on what the base wanted, 60 feet?
In that area, yes.
Okay, so 60 feet is the default building height, Holiday Inn is just under that.
Okay.
And, and the flight path, we see from the communications between the hospital consultant and the State Division of Aeronautics, that the almost 60-foot Holiday Inn building clears that, it's not a problem with that flight path. So the...
So the, okay. So their email is saying that according to them, with what they see, this 59.8 foot is okay. Is that, is that what we got?
That's what we're hearing, right?
So... As reported by their consultant, who states, who states in an email, "We determine the hospital's proposed sector flight path for the new helopad would clear the roof of the Holiday Inn hotel structure by approximately three feet, thus meeting the FAR 77, Part 77 criteria." That's what has to be met, for that to be able to clear that flight path.
Okay, so again, and I'm sure you're going to get into it, but right off the bat, I'm having trouble seeing the problem, in the sense that we've, we've got, even if what you're saying, number one, any kind of unwritten agreement between Mr. Parsons, who's no longer with us, and any business development entity, unless it is in writing, it isn't. My father was an attorney, he used to say, if it's not in writing, it isn't, it just isn't. So, it's just, it could be a lunch meeting, it could be a, a nice talk over a conference, it could be a pre-planning meeting, but if you don't have an agreement, and I'm something in writing, with anybody on anything, it just isn't. So, I, I, I don't hold too much weight on the first part of that. If a contract surfaces, great, I mean, super. If there is no contract with Mr. Parsons saying anything, but what you're saying, Ron, is that even if, let's pretend we had a contract, let, Lloyd, we have one, let's pretend one shows up, between Mr. Parsons and the hospital, for 30 feet, right? Let's pretend we got one. And, you know, but, but, you know, we're saying that as it stands right now, the consultant hired by the hospital is saying that what we have is okay. That, that the planning, development across the street is okay, they're saying okay. And I, I guess what I'm trying to get at, I'm not seeing what the, what the problem is.
There, there is a problem with the, the front of those lots need to have a height restriction. The, the first 120 feet, 130 feet, would have to be below 60 foot. So there is, there is an issue with at least three of the lots at the frontage of Charlie Boulevard, which would either need a overlay zone restricting the height, or would need an navigation easement with the property owners voluntarily restricting the height, or the city could pass a, a ordinance restricting that height also. But there is an issue with the front lots with their proposed flight path. The only, the only illustration here is, is that if you're talking about, that, that it was reported in the paper, that the city was choosing the development of the hotel over the hotel, the hotel over the hospital, is not true, because the hotel can be built as is and still be within the proposed flight path.
Of those three lot, are these vacant lots? What, what are these three lots? What are they?
One of the lots is occupied by AutoZone.
One is, one, hold on, one is AutoZone, what's the other one?
The, the second lot is the front retail pad for the Holiday Inn Express, if they develop it, and the next lot would be to the north.
And, and so it's vacant?
If you look at the, the, the map there, if you look at AutoZone, it'd be, it'd be the AutoZone lot, the next lot to the north, and the, and the next two lots to the north would be affected by the, the hospital's heliport protection zone.
Well, let me ask you, if I could, if, if I could say this, and I, maybe I'm jumping the gun, but okay.
It's an analog pointer.
Okay, but I'm trying just to do the quickest way to get to yes, so everybody's happy, without, I, I get it. So, if you got three lots in question, and is, would the, would the, would the hotel be willing to...
I, I have...
Sign something that says, yeah, we could do that, we would leave that at 30 feet? Would they do that?
Well, it's not the hospital's property.
I mean, I, I, no, I, I don't mean that, no, I mean the, the hotel, would they be willing to do that, you think?
Can you let me get to the end of my presentation? I'll tell you where we're going from there.
Okay.
You're getting to the end here, let me get to the end, because we do, we do have a path to an outcome on this. April 10th, the city sent, the hospital sent the city a letter, basically requesting that no building permits or other approvals be issued with respect to the proposed hotel property or other construction on that site, until the Division of Aeronautics provides a written clearance and confirmation that the proposed hotel project does not jeopardize the safety of the approved helostop flight path, and the emergency operations for the hospital. Now, according to the hospital's own consultant, there is no issue with the hospital. And as such, the city sent a response letter to the hospital denying the request, due to the fact that there still is no flight path application with Department of Aeronautics. There has been no application to the city regarding any sort of environmental review, or anything else that's required by the Department of Aeronautics for their, their helopad permit. Now if Mr. Pilchun wants to weigh in on this further, he can.
Yeah, sure. Keep in mind that issuing a building permit, it's what's called a ministerial act, which means that when the, the person at the counter, the plan checker, all he can do, he or she, all they can do is check to make sure that the plans conform to the building code, and then that person, that staff person must issue a building permit. So what the, there's no discretion, there's no public hearing about whether to issue a, a building permit. So what the hospital's letter was asking is that the city hold off issuing a building permit until all this gets settled about a flight path. So, the, the problem with that is that everyone has to know what the rules are, and when you bring your plans to the public counter, ask, applying for a building permit, you need to be able to expect that the city will open up the rulebook, apply the rules that exist today, and issue the building permit. The, the city cannot say, well, I heard that something might happen, so we're going to just not give you your, your building permit, because I think the neighbor might not like it. So it, it can't work that way. So the, what Mr. Strand is saying is that, as the rules exist today, there is no flight path. City has not approved a flight path, Division of Aeronautics has not approved it, there's no such restriction. So there is nothing preventing the city from issuing the building permit for the hotel.
According to the Department of Aeronautics, there are three things that the hospital must provide the Department of Aeronautics that they will need from the city. They will need an environmental document, basically, an environmental review of the flight path, not just the helopad. That will be review of the, the affected parcels that were potential development rights may be inhibited. They also need a airport land use commission approval, and then the city council will need, will need to approve a resolution, approval as needed, as required under PUC 21661.5. Basically, we approve the flight path as proposed. Here is a copy of the heliport site approval permit application. Here is a copy of the heliport site approval permit application. I know it's probably kind of hard to see. It's a DOA document 0201. But it states those three things, but the top part that it has to provide is two copies of scale drawings of the heliport and adjoining areas. Then a topographical map shows the location of the approach surfaces related to the heliport. These are several things that still need to be provided by the hospital, some first to the city for approval, and then ultimately to the Department of Aeronautics. Moving forward, the city is supportive of the emergency room department upgrade. We understand the importance that the hospital brings, and especially having a state-of-the-art expanded emergency room means to the community and what it means to the base and any potential growth. We are willing to work with the hospital, but we have to have information to be able to work with folks. I did reach out to the Department of Aeronautics. We have set up a meeting between the city, the hospital, and them tomorrow to be able to discuss a path forward on this, to be able to understand exactly what the hospital needs to provide and how we can move forward. The city is more than likely very supportive of an overlay zone. I did reach out to the owner of the Holiday Inn Express, and I asked him about the navigation easement that he is working with the hospital. He is supportive of signing the agreement and entering into a navigation agreement, which I'll let Lloyd--
That's a private agreement between the owners of the hospital and the owners of the hotel property. That's between them. That's not for the city to say yes or no, or to tell someone to sign something. If those two private property owners want to enter into an agreement whereby the hotel agrees to restrict its property, just like if your neighbor starts building something that's going to block your view, and you don't like it, you can pay, you can enter into a private agreement with your neighbor, pay him, and he will may agree to restrict his building to protect your view. But that's a private matter between landowners.
The city has recommended the hospital reach out to the other two potentially affected properties to attempt to negotiate a navigation easement with both entities. If that should happen, and their, the flight path, their conceptual flight path is good, then we'd be able to move forward to the next step. So we're hoping tomorrow during the meeting that the hospital's heliport consultant, their land attorney, and with Department of Aeronautics, we can establish a clear path forward so we can get this thing done. I do believe both the hospital and the hotel can coexist. And Madam Mayor, that is the end of my presentation. I'll be open to any questions.
All right. Is there any other council questions?
So the, talking about the three lots, the three areas, you're saying that any type of agreement that the hospital would make with the hotel concerning the height of the lot that they've got, two, you've got that empty lot and the owner of that, and three is AutoZone, so you just have three entities that the city is recommending that we do a, whatever, what did you just call it?
The city's not recommending anything. What the city would like to understand is what properties are clearly going to be affected by the hospital's heliport protection zone. And then based upon that, then either the hospital can reach out to the entities and attempt to obtain a navigation easement, basically private party agreements. If that doesn't work out, then they can come back to the city and request an overlay zone where the city can consider whether or not it is in the best interest of the community to restrict, do a reasonable restriction of building heights in those areas for the betterment of the community with the development of the hospital, emergency room department, and new helipad. And I think that everything that I've seen so far, I have not seen anything that would really draw a significant amount of concern. I don't see significant deprivation of development rights that would occur with a reasonable overlay.
With the initial asking for, from Drummond to Inukorn Road, every one of those properties would have been affected by their ability to grow or develop or change anything that exists right now. So with that gone, either the overlay or the navigation easement protects those properties, except the three will need to come to some sort of agreement.
I have no idea, I have no idea why the hospital is requesting to restrict building heights for a mile along China Lake Boulevard. That is one of, hopefully one of the answers we'll get tomorrow during the meeting if that's actually necessary. If it's not, then I would assume they're not going to ask for it. But if they do ask for it, and if it is necessary, my recommendation is they would have to go through the overlay zone. There would have to be proper notification of the property owners before the city even contemplated a restriction in development rights of those properties. Because they would have to have an opportunity to respond and state their purpose because really, at the end of the day, the hospital really does not-- if they chose to do an elevated heliport, they could build a structure high enough that they wouldn't have to ask for any sort of overlay or navigation easements.
But if I may, the city council will keep an open mind about it until it's before the council for a decision. And something like that would definitely go to the planning commission first. Planning commission would make a recommendation to the city council, and then the city council would have all the facts, staff report, data in front of you. And the council would be unbiased, would not have said beforehand whether they like the idea or don't like the idea, and would make its decision.
Can we say ahead of time we support this expansion of the emergency room? That it is best for the community, it is best for the city, it is best for all of us to work together? Is that voicing an opinion you're speaking about?
Madam Mayor, I think the more generally that you say it like you just did, I think the better. So to say that the community supports the hospital, I think that's kind of clear, that it's, the hospital is very important to the community.
I want to be careful what I can say and what I can't say.
The hospital is very important to the community. I think that's clear.
So Ron, the city overlaying the zone is essentially the same thing as the private navigation easement. It's just that one is a private agreement between parties. If they don't come to that agreement, then you're still dealing with the same three entities, but you just deal with it in another way as a public overlay zone, but it's the same three lots. That's what confuses me. When you don't clarify that, are we-- one is a private agreement navigation easement. The second is a public navigation easement for the same three entities, correct?
Yes. One would be done by the city council.
No, I understand. But it's the same thing. It's the same people. One is they try to work it out privately. If that doesn't work, then we try to work it out another way.
Let me be careful when I say there's only three properties. We have to really take a look at what their, what their map actually covers and what the relief map and what the actual elevations are to make sure that there's no other lots that are affected. But from looking at their map, it appears to only be three.
Okay, because that's a real huge issue, and also the issue of this doing a much longer thing from downs-- that's a completely different animal, a horse of a different color. And you're saying that the FAA, that they have not requiring that?
Not unless the hospital has changed their flight path, their helipad that the Department of Aeronautics is unaware of. Like I said, that is information that is not available to me at this point in time.
Well, it's not available because they have not officially applied. Is this correct?
Correct.
Well, okay, all right. Again, we don't have anything in writing. The issue is, we don't have it in writing. They have not officially applied. They put in an official-- they have a heliport consul-- I don't know why in the world you have a heliport consultant. Heavenly days, what are they spending for that? If I had a heliport consultant, if you're not developing the plan and the application and submitting it properly to help get all of the details through, I'm not quite, and I'm not trying to be difficult. I don't know why you have a consultant. So if they have not formally applied to the city so that you have all of the details that you need to know to study, to analyze, to make a decision, I don't know, what are we supposed to do? I do not know that.
I think our path forward is to meet with the Department of Aeronautics, the hospital, and the city, and get it done.
Now, the reason the AutoZone is affected currently, it's low enough that it doesn't affect the flight path.
Correct, but if you change--
But if I, if a developer bought that property, tore that building down, and built something else, then it could.
They would be restricted, yes. And that property owner would presumably have the right to respond to any change in their development standards of that property. Even though that building may only be 22-feet high, he still has the right to put a tower on it up to 60-foot. And if we're going to deprive him of that development right, then that person needs to be notified and needs to be done the appropriate way.
Is there any other council comments? All right, I'm going to open up to the public. If anybody would like to make comments, please come forward and identify yourself.
Good evening. Mayor Breeden and honorable council members.
We don't hear you. Can you speak again?
Is this okay now?
Yes.
Great. Good evening. Mayor Breeden and honorable council members. I'm Francis Park from Park and Valliows on behalf of our client, Ridgecrest Regional Hospital. I'm a land use attorney with over 25 years of experience and an expert in real estate and the California Environmental Quality Act. I'm here tonight to submit a letter, which I have today, to express the hospital's concerns and desire to work with the city to help move forward the expansion of the emergency department and new helipad. The hospital is concerned about two things, and really needs a partner in the city to protect the quality of health care for this community. The first relates to potential conflicts with the new hotel project approved recently by the city. And the second is a zone overlay to protect the emergency flight path in the future for certain properties nearby the hospital. The hospital, as you know, is a vital resource to the Ridgecrest community and the Southern Sierra region, providing clinical excellence, quality health care, and state-of-the-art facilities. The hospital is also supportive of economic development and new projects, but not at the risk of jeopardizing the hospital's emergency services. The hospital is committed to this community and wants to invest further to expand the emergency medical services. As you may know, the city approved the hospital expansion and helipad in November 2017. There was a categorical exemption which complied with the California Environmental Quality Act at that time. And the hospital has been working diligently ever since with all of the various state and other governmental agencies to get the necessary permits and approvals. During that period, the hospital has spent millions of dollars and countless hours in advancing its plans. It's not just as simple as submitting a heliport application to the Division of Aeronautics. The hospital has been pursuing this investment to protect the quality of health care. Key to achieving that goal is a flight path for the new helipad that needs to be approved by the Division of Aeronautics or DOA. This flight path requires that a few of the properties along China Lake Boulevard and to the east respects or in height limitations and other requirements like obstruction lights to ensure the safety of the helicopter operations. We're asking for two things. Number one relates to the new Holiday Inn project. There was a condition added to confirm with the appropriate governmental agency that the hotel structure would not endanger the hospital's emergency helicopters. The Division of Aeronautics in this instance has been reviewing the new flight path, including the recent introduction of the hotel that's at 60 feet. And while they have preliminarily indicated that it appears to not obstruct the flight path, it isn't a written determination. Their clearance ultimately, which will be a written clearance, will be dependent upon verification, number one, of the new helipad elevation. Number two, verification of the final building height of the hotel. And number three, installation of rooftop obstruction lights for any structures on the hotel parcels, as well as a limitation on the western portion of that property so that the flight path isn't obstructed. These conditions are absolutely essential to the hospital. The hospital cannot move forward unless there is certainty that future structures will not jeopardize the safety of the emergency helicopters, and most importantly, patients. We are hoping the city can work with the hotel developer and hospital to enter into a navigation easement that recognizes these safety requirements. The second item, as I mentioned, is the need for a new zone overlay that would ultimately be adopted by the city council. This new overlay would recognize the importance of the hospital flight path and help to avoid future conflicts with other property owners by placing reasonable limitations on the height, massing, and orientation of future structures within the flight path. We agree with the city manager that this is a good idea, and this is something the hospital would like to work expeditiously with city staff to have this overlay approved as soon as possible. The hospital is in the process of engaging all of the necessary technical experts to put this into motion, and we hope to meet with city staff in the near future to plan out the necessary steps and timeline. We look forward to updating this city council in the future on the progress of this overlay zone. In closing, I want to stress that not only is this issue of the utmost concern to the hospital, but the public also has a compelling and significant interest in ensuring that the city's determinations with the hospital and any future development in the flight path keep the safety of this community foremost in mind. We look to the city council to provide leadership in ensuring that any development going forward will be carried out safely and without conflict with the delivery of the vital emergency medical services to this community. Representatives of the hospital are here tonight and happy to respond to any questions you may have. I want to thank you for your commitment to the safety of the Ridgecrest community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody want to say anything here?
I have some questions. Let me make sure. Concerning this new zone overlay, are we talking about these three lots? Are we talking about from downs all the way to Inukorn? What are we talking about?
We don't know at this point because all of those properties need to be surveyed. We need to figure out the exact elevation of the new helipad as well as the existing helipad, and mapping out those flight paths, and making sure that we have all of the properties covered. So that hardware, the technical expertise, hasn't been engaged in that effort. So it may be three, but it may be a whole lot more. So I'd like to reserve judgment on that.
Well, first off, you have to determine from the FAA if they even require that or not, correct?
The, actually, it's the Division of Aeronautics, which is a division of Caltrans, which is the approving agency for the helipad approval, the flight path.
Okay, so they have to decide first. Whether it's the chicken or the egg, they've got to decide first, and then you proceed with your additional evaluation, or which is which?
No, the, so the Division of Aeronautics would approve the new flight path. And for purposes of the overlay zone, we have a civil engineer that would be mapping out all of the properties and figuring out the future actual elevation of the helipad, as well as all of the other structures within the flight path to make sure that it's correct from an engineering perspective. Only then can we figure out exactly how many properties are impacted.
All right, but I guess what I'm confused at, so between Lloyd and you, sir, you're an attorney as well, right? As attorney, attorney, my question is this. Whose job is it to work out all these details and that study and to figure it out, the elevations for each of the building? Is that the city of Ridgecrest? Are we supposed to do all that, or is that 100% on the developer to do? Well, I'm asking you, sir, who does that?
So I think the city has jurisdiction for local land use approvals, which occurred with the site plan approval in November 2017 for the hospital expansion and helipad. The Division of Aeronautics has the approval authority for the flight path.
If you're not answering this question, I don't think, whose responsibility is to make sure this happens? Is that what--
Well, yeah, I just wanted, what, here's the deal--
How do we make it happen?
Well, yeah, I mean, the city is under, forgive me, the city's under attack because we're holding it up, we're obstructing with this and that and the other. What I'm hearing is that there's a whole lot of details that are yet to be worked out, and from what I understand, that's pretty much 90% on the developer to do, which has not been done. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Mr. Martin, if you look on the screen in front of you, this is the documents that are required from the hospital.
By whom? That, the Caltrans.
Yeah, they're either, they either come from the hospital, approved by us-- Yeah, they're either, they either come from the hospital, approved by us, and then ultimately they go to Department of Aeronautics. But this is what is required of the hospital.
All right, so I guess my, I guess my question is-
Well, can I just interject? I think Mr. Martin said it perfectly, that it's not the city's role to guess what a developer needs. It's the developer's role to do the research and bring the project to the city for approval.
Right, and I mean, I guess my question, which I wanted to ask the seconds you brought this slide up, is I'm just, it's not a trick question. I guess if this is a, if I'm going to build a house and I have to get these 29 permits, and here they are, and that's it, you're not building till you get, I mean, you have to do that, here is something that's required to do your project. And so I guess my question is, why, why hasn't this been done? Why haven't you turned this in?
Well, the hospital is in the process of preparing all of the technical information to satisfy those requirements, and they'll be submitting them in the near future.
I'm good with that, and I appreciate that. But you have to appreciate my position and all of us up here, and that we're kind of being dinged because we're late in the game, or we're obstructing, or we're doing something, or doing something, when it's clearly indicated that we don't have the information, sir, to make an informed decision. Would you agree with that?
I would actually disagree with that. There's documents that I've been shown that the city has had that information regarding the flight path for some time, since March 2017. Now, I'm not here to rehash all of the different facts. I think we should focus on how to move forward, and we agree that we'd like to meet with the city and with the Division of Aeronautics and figure out what are the next proper steps.
Has an application been submitted?
It has not.
For the flight pattern?
No.
So my question, and currently the Holiday Inn Express meets the current FAA guidelines for the height restrictions under the current-
DOA.
Status, right?
Our heliport consultant has determined that it clears by three feet.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean that the-
What I'm saying is, they meet the current guidelines, correct?
It appears to, but it doesn't mean that-
And they're willing to-
The governmental agency has signed off on that. That's subject to the final elevation of the helipad, as well as the actual building height.
Which hasn't been submitted yet. So they can only, they can kind of go on what they can go on, too. And currently, they're meeting that current FAA or DOA, you know, guideline, and they're willing to work with the lower elevation, the 30-foot height restriction on the roadside property, right?
Well, again, that hasn't been established yet. The hospital would like the hotel developer to agree to that restriction.
To that restriction, but they, okay.
The hospital has provided the owner of the Holiday Inn Express a navigation easement. I have a copy of it. The hospital has been waiting for him to sign it. I've discussed with him why he has not. I do plan on, in the next week or so, seeing if I can arrange a meeting between the owner of the Holiday Inn Express, the hospital, so we can work that out. He has asked the city to assist.
But the, but the city cannot tell the private landowner what to do in that matter.
Correct.
All right, well, I do, I'm sorry. Go ahead. All right, so here's the thing. In answer to your first thing, and I told Mr. Suva this when I had, he asked me to meet, and I came and met with the several members of the board, you know, and he had a concern, too, about, he didn't want to get over, I mean, go if there were some significant areas where he was concerned about with new surprises or new this and new that, and he wanted some kind of an assurance from the city that we really do support the project and that we do want to help in any way that we can. And I gave him that assurance, and I spoke for everybody up here. Everybody up here on this dais wants the hospital to expand. This is a fantastic thing for our city. It's fantastic. And Mr. Suva is doing a terrific job, and the hospital board is doing a terrific job. It's one of the biggest go-get-'em groups in town, next to the base there. I mean, I don't know, we've got four or five go-get-'em groups. They're probably number two right now. Mr. Suva's done a terrific job, and the hospital board, I see many of the members here tonight. They work very, very, very hard to make all of this happen for our little town. So let me answer your first concern is you have, I mean, somebody knocked me down, but I think you have our overwhelming support. So any kind of articles that have appeared about the city versus healthcare, forgive me, things are done to sell papers and negative sales and all that, that's not true. There's nobody up here who wants to kill anything, obstruct anything, stall anything, throw in another wrench in the works that I can see, that I have seen. I just haven't seen it. Nobody likes to be told no, and nobody needs to be told we have to do this form, and nobody needs to be, likes to be told there are more fees and more things from Caltrans, nobody. But that's beyond the purview of everybody up here, including the city manager. We've got to follow the laws and work on the data we have, and the main data we don't have, by your own admission. So I, in answer to your question, we're ready to go. But you've got to give us all the data that is required by any developer who wants to develop something, all the data, all of it. We need to, we don't even know right now whether or not, we're talking about three people, an empty lot, the auto place, and the lot in front of the hotel. We don't even know if it's that, or is it from Downs to Indian County-
It's not Downs, it's Drummond.
If Drummond, all the way down to the base. I mean, you know, that's a whopper. So until y'all get that worked out, and those details worked out, and this form filled out, when you get that and you bring it back, will all of us identify the two or three, what we need to do next to get to go, and we'll help you get there. You have my support, I mean, on getting there, but we've, and all of us, I think, will do that. But you've got to do what every developer's got to do and give us the data that we need. Right now, we don't, we don't have it. Okay? Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Has there been an elevation set on the helipad? Do we know exactly how, what elevation that's going to be when it's finished?
No, not at this point.
So then the map we have from the federal Aeronautics administration is useless until we know an elevation?
That's correct.
Well, so you say that we've had this information for two years, but it's really worthless until we know elevations. Is that correct?
Mr. Maurer, there are emails that indicate that this is location of their flight pad. This is the one that was approved by city council. There was an elevation. It's a six-foot elevated pad. There are emails between your heliport consultant and, I believe, city staff discussing, or better yet, even Bob Tuttle, the architect for the Holiday Inn Express. I do have those emails that went back and forth where your heliport consultant and the architects for the hotel, actually, the hotel actually hired land assessors to go out and get those elevations, and they are, they have been indicated on that map.
I think what you have are the schematic designs that were approved as a part of the site plan approval.
But those do, but those do have sea level elevation.
But that's different than actual final building permits, so.
Well, we're talking, we're talking elevations that were obtained by, through the hotel developer and your heliport consultant. They went back and forth to get these elevation numbers.
I understand. And the remainder of the hospital is subject to state permitting regulations, and so those permitting regulations also impact where everything ends up being finally. So that's some of the reasons why you can't firmly establish exactly where everything is at this point.
Does the hospital intend to move their helipad?
No, but we don't know exactly how high it's going to be ultimately.
Can I interject really fast? So you all haven't set in stone yet what you're doing, but we're supposed to hold off any other property owners what they can do until you decide. I don't think you all would want that done to you or anyone else in this room. You, the Holiday Inn people bought their property, they've made sure that at this time what you all think you're going to do, they're doing that, they're willing to sign off on it. And so to say that we can't move forward with them because you guys don't know for sure what you may or may not do, that's, that's where, that's where we look like we're development unfriendly, is because we would be blocking the Holiday Inn project from coming in. They're ready to go, but we would have to tell them, "Sorry, we can't let you go yet because the hospital has to figure out for sure what they're doing, and we have to wait for their application. Do you have any kind of timeline of when this application is going to be filled out?"
I think we're awaiting resolution of this issue.
Of what issue, please?
Of this issue, in terms of the Division of Aeronautics and the hotel.
With all due respect, sir, if you would have addressed this issue back in 2016, would this already have not been resolved?
Are you talking in 2017, when the helipad was approved?
No, when this first relief map was created by your heliport consultant with the placement of your helipad and the ratio, the eight-to-one ratio that's required to establish a heliport protection zone. It appears that the hospital knew several months before they even brought it up, why wasn't those properties addressed early on? Why was it that it was a couple of years later? I have emails that your heliport consultant was in contact with the city in March of 2017. There has been no mention of the properties across the street. Why the delay?
Good evening.
Fred, please identify yourself.
Fred Hawkins, Ridgecrest Regional Hospital, Canadian County, North Charlie Boulevard. The discussions with the city go all the way back to Gary Parsons, and I have an email that verifies that. And in the email from our, Ricardo Bennett, our consultant, and I'll highlight this and be more than happy to give it to the staff here, the issue is whether the height of any future building on that property would interfere with the flight path. And she's referring to buildings east of the hospital and the heliport. This is follow-up to a meeting with Gary Parsons regarding future development in the area and development of the helipad. It was already being addressed at that time, but nobody knew exactly what was going to happen down the road and across the ball. So this was being addressed, with different staff members, unfortunately. The, maybe, can I answer some of the questions that came up? We are still in development of the flight path plan. I mean, a week ago, I was still signing purchase orders from our surveyors. The Caltrans DOA has now asked to do a survey of lighting and tree heights in the area for flight paths. So this is not over yet. The reason we haven't filed an application. Whether or not the helipad's going to be moved, that's an option, but we're looking at all the options. But it's a limited area. That's a big flight, that's a big helipad. You can't just take it up and move it anywhere. So that's, but we are looking at options of where else on the property could be moved to. I don't want to rehash a lot of that stuff, but I just wanted to get it kind of out and move forward. Our concern goes back to the original, the height around, let's say this is the tower where the Holiday Inn is going to be built right now, and it is 60 feet, 59.8, as Mr. Stran said. The helicopter on the eight-to-one glide path from the existing helipad at a six-foot berm clears it by basically three feet. That means the eight-to-one ratio with the FAA requirements, three feet clearance. That's like telling the police officer, "I'm going to get you both your vests and stop 75% of the bullets." It is not going to happen. That's too much of a danger for the flight path. Not going to happen. So we're looking at all the alternatives. On the front part of the flat pad, the retail pad, today, there's no restriction whatsoever that says if the Holiday Inn wants to build a second tower on the front, and go back to the map that Ron put up there with the flight path, it'll crash into the middle of the tower. We cannot invest $32 million into an emergency department and helipad where somebody in three or four years will come up and say, "I'm going to build the second tower." We have a major problem with that. So we have two options. One was, and the picture with the yellow map going up and down Charlie Boulevard, that was my idea. Don't blame me for that. We know most of those people, plus the hospital owns a lot of that property. So in discussions and in looking into it, that was a viable option. Not even all the way to the triangle, but also at least toward maybe for us. Excuse me. The overlay, if we can't get the easements by voluntary agreement with the property owners, the overlay, zone overlay is the only other option. But if we don't get one or the other, there's no emergency department. It's that simple. We cannot build $32 million expansion with the possibility of a hotel being built in front of us.
Mr. Hawkins, if we took your conceptual flight path that your consultant submitted to Department of Aeronautics, and we use that eight-to-one ratio, and we looked at the three front properties, if we followed that, because in my conversation with Department of Aeronautics, they state that that map looks close. Obviously, they, they're going to need some, some red flashing lights on top of the hotel. They're going to have to make sure that, that all of the light poles are the correct height. But it appears from that relief map that we're on the right track, or you're on the right track. So if we work together and we're able to either get navigation easements or an overlay zone, and we were able to secure that, would that be able to allow the hospital to move forward with their emergency room department?
We either have to have all the agreements reached with the property owners.
Right.
For example, we don't know what's going to happen down the road by our-
Correct, I mean, if we're talking about, if we're talking about securing a certain building height restriction on those three lots, if those are the only ones that are affected by that. If we can either, through you guys, through private parties, secure that so they can be recorded on the title, or if the city comes in and establishes an overlay zone, which I think that we are amenable to, because I do not believe, from what I've seen so far on your relief map, that restricting the building heights in those areas would represent a condemnation. So I think if we move forward in that direction, so what I'm hearing from your attorney, I think what I'm hearing from you, is if we move forward and attempt to secure height restrictions in those areas that are within your, your flight path, that you guys can move forward, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Can I also, just to make sure quick, the, in the video, the first gentleman, Ben Tu, is our architect. He's not really knowledgeable about, about flight paths and heliports. So the guy was kind of put in a corner that night at the meeting. And Jim Suva is not an expert in helipads or flight paths either, so he was kind of caught off guard with some of the questions.
Mr. Hawkins, that was, there was no disrespect meant-
No, I understand, I understand.
There's no disrespect meant on those. The only reason why those videos were shown is because I wanted everybody to see exactly what the planning commission was told at the time they made their decision. It had nothing to do with embarrassing anybody, had everything to do with, this is what was told, so there's no argument about it.
Sure, sure. Any other questions? Other questions? Okay.
Thank you, Fred.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, please?
My name's Chris Ellis, community guy. So I just want to follow up on this proceeding and a couple of things that I've heard while I've been sitting here. And I came with a list of questions that I'm not even going to submit because it's not appropriate for this meeting. But one thing I'll say is, I don't think it's appropriate that this meeting is even happening. The fact that we're providing a one-sided set of facts that's based on a limited review of data that supports whatever position that the city council and city staff wants to present, I think is unfortunate, but I am encouraged by the discussions that I've heard tonight and the willingness to work together. But frankly, until something's done, if I were on the hospital board, I'd be recommending that we just leave the helipad where it is and continue to fly over the top of Heritage, because at the end of the day, the hospital in the beginning, the reason the helipad was looked to be moved was because of all the complaints that were coming in from the residents of Heritage. So I think there's a lot of different ways to spin this thing. I think at the end of the day, you know, what we see publicly in the paper is what we read, but it's all alleged, whatever. What we're hearing tonight doesn't mean a whole heck of a lot to me. What I hear from your attorney to explain in kindergarten level to the rest of the public doesn't mean a lot to me. What means a lot to me is that we say that we're going to work together to get this solved, and that was the last thing. Rather than worrying about who did what or who didn't do what, why don't we focus on getting this fixed? And then maybe we can all work together on other issues in the city. That's all I've got to say. And I don't want any questions, so I'm just making a comment.
Thank you.
Chris, I'd just like to make one comment. Since I'm on both sides of the issue, you know, so you don't think it's fair for us to defend ourselves when the-
I don't think it's necessary for you to defend yourself. I didn't say it's not fair for you to defend yourself. I think, I think-
Because the article in the news review was very one-sided.
Well-
They didn't even ask us-
I believe that you're wrong, and I believe that multiple attempts were made to get the city to comment on things and provide some input. But that's my opinion, and it may or may not be true. But if you don't comment when called, then how can you expect to have your comments read in the paper?
Mr. Ellis, I can absolutely unequivocally state that I did not get one phone call regarding any of these four articles that have been in sequence the last month. Unequivocally.
Okay, well, hopefully we- Okay, well, hopefully we recorded that.
Well, the only comment I have is that, sir, we can't, any of these, any of these legal developments...
You can't comment on it, I get it. But you approved at the planning commission. It's not like you can bury your head in the sand and act like you knew nothing about moving the helipad and that there was going to be a flight path that didn't go right over the top of Heritage, it had to go the other way. So you can say, "Oh, wow, this line stopped at the road." Well, that's probably because the helicopter was going to disappear when it got to the road. You can make any assessment or assertion that you want while you're sitting up here with nobody to rebut it, and that's fine. But there's a, there's a measure of common sense that has to be applied to this thing, and it's not about who's right and wrong. It's about what's doing, doing what's right. And that's what we need to do here, not, not point the finger at each other. Let's get this done.
Chris, I...
And you let, let's get this done on your side, too. And I know you're working on it, but let's get it done.
Chris, I'd like to say something. You and I have been friends a very long time, and I'm not going to depend on our friendship to respond to this. If you understand this, there is no intent to poke anybody in the nose, anybody to make, to ridicule anybody. We simply present the facts that, as we have them, as we see them, we want to...
As you see them.
Well, because that's all we have. And so what we want to know is, where do we go from here? How do we make it happen? It is in all of our best interest to do that.
Absolutely, so let's do that.
Please, let's do that.
And I agree with that, but Chris, also, you said this, you thought this meeting was not appropriate, that it's one-sided, that...
It is one-sided.
I know, but wait, wait just a minute, hold on. I'd like to clarify that. It's a public meeting. It's not designed to be one-sided, anything, for heaven's sakes. You're here, for heaven's sakes. Fred's here, for heaven's sakes. The attorney's here.
Right.
I, don't, no, but wait.
Have they made a presentation?
No, but no, wait a minute, no. This is a public hearing, Chris.
In a period.
I mean, a, a public meeting...
Right.
To talk about the issues and talk about both sides.
No, it's not to talk about the issue, it's to defend the, the, the decisions that have been made. That's what this is. It's, it's not to talk about that, because we don't have time to talk about solving the issue tonight.
Well, we, I think that we've come up with this letter here and with the plan that Mr. Stran has, it's, I don't think it's...
Then why are we worried about having this meeting if we've already got a solution to it?
Well, we don't have a solution because, A, we don't have all of the data that is required on the, an application here, and we don't even have the data that your, the attorney is saying concerning all these other properties and so forth.
At any point before the Holiday Inn was approved, was there any discussion at the city level that they might want to go back to the hospital and say, "You know, we just approved a, a heliport move. We don't have a flight plan. I know it's not your responsibility to do that. It's, it, you don't have to do a lot of things. But is it the right thing to do, to go back to the hospital and say, "Oh, you know what? We've got a, we've got a potential development that impacts you." Is there, is there anything else that you can provide? We, we have so much going on in this city in terms of, of construction that it's, it's got to be overwhelming to think that we could make one phone call and solve this before it became an issue at this level. So I, I'm curious, was that discussion ever had? And did somebody shoot down, specifically shoot down the idea ahead of time that the city should reach out to the hospital?
That is not true.
But I'm asking, I didn't, I didn't...
That, that's not, that did not happen. But here, look at it from another point of view. The hospital had a conceptual drawing of their heliport protection zone, I mean, presumably 2016. They never shared it with the city. I only got it because I reached out to the Department of Aeronautics and asked for information, anything that the hospital maybe gave them.
And did you ask the hospital?
So how's the city, how's the city supposed to read?
Did you ask the hospital?
Yes.
And they said no?
Correct.
The hospital said, "No, I will not provide you that information."
We were at a meeting, and Mayor Breeden was there, and I asked for the information, never got it.
Okay.
Never got a flight path map. If we'd had it, this, this whole thing would have been a different direction.
That was still after the planning commission meeting approving the Holiday Inn, right?
Yes.
We never got any information from the hospital regarding the particulars of their flight path until I received it from the Department of Aeronautics at my request.
Okay, all right.
Okay, would've, should've, could've are difficult.
Yeah, exactly, let's fix it.
But let's, let's see how we go from here.
Okay?
Anybody else would like to make comments? We'd really like to hear what you have to say. That's why you're here. Do I assume nobody else has anything to say? Okay? Ron, do you have anything else to say? Are we done with that part of it? And where do we go from here, both Lloyd and Ron? Would you share with us?
No, ma'am, our, our commitment is to work with the hospital. I pick up the representative from the Department of Aeronautics at the airport tomorrow at 1:30, hopefully, depending upon the weather. And we have a 2:30 meeting with the hospital. I believe they're going to have their land attorney and their heliport consultant there so we can start working through these issues and look for a productive outcome.